I make a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Do I have a second?
One second. We've got a review here.
Maybe we're getting a little glossy. You get any printer?
This is for 25 South Main, is that right?
Pardon?
This is for 25 South Main.
I don't want to have just this.
And what is this?
That's more pictures of 102.
102 South Street.
Okay. I don't doubt for a minute that it's falling apart. No, I've driven by it for years.
It's kind of a roof on, but the eaves are still hanging.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Brooklyn, is it these two computers talking together? I mean, we deal with this stuff all the time at work.
It's like the printer, you know, you go to work, if the printer works, it's fine, you go home, it doesn't work, now it's Zoom. Your personal computer never works.
Yeah.
IT has got it right every time it works.
All right, so it should be set. My name's Dan Olson, I'm sub-chairing this meeting for Jeff Pollak. This is the Historic Preservation Board meeting of Monday, September 18th, 2023. We'll go down the list on the agenda, but first, does any board members need to recuse themselves from any of the items on the agenda?
I do not.
I do not.
Nor do I. You might need to on 35 Rand, I thought about that also. It's for information only, though, that was my question.
Why?
You got an opinion on that?
You have a...
Oh. Okay, I had...
She didn't have access to the meeting packet before.
There's an opinion from you then.
No, yeah, I know, I was professionally asked to provide an opinion. So that's 35 Rand. Sorry, I forgot the street number.
There's no vote on it, so I imagine that they're...
Yeah, there's probably not any of them.
Yeah, but if you're accused, you're accused, do it.
Okay.
Do not participate in it.
Okay.
Are previous opinions provided to the other board members?
Hmm?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay.
I forgot this part of the record.
Okay. All right, good, then we'll start with 102 South Street for the renovation.
Yeah, and for all applicants tonight, I just want to let you know, because there is only three of us, that you are entitled to a vote ahead of the full board, so if for whatever reason you would like to have it postponed until there is a full board, that is an option that is available to you.
Thank you.
And so I think we addressed all the comments I've received during the information card. Do you have comments?
Yes.
All right. So there's seven items.
Yeah.
And could we just go through them? You have the drawings too?
Yeah, unless there's something other than these guys.
And those are just windows.
Elevation drawings?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we have those in the packet.
The elevation drawings, there's a cut sheet on the lights, or lights. There's a cut sheet on the windows and that, and there's, I think there's information on the LP Smart Side siding.
So this is wood.
Okay, nice. With a laminate over the top, how do they do it?
It's epoxy, it's wood chips with epoxy in it, but it's...
Then stamped, then must have been formed or stamped?
I have a simple question before we go any further. Both sheet 2A and 2B, excuse me, are shown as proposed preferred, but they're not identical. So which one is really preferred?
BB 2A is preferred, is the door, man door still.
Okay. I just want to be sure.
Yeah.
That if I'm looking and commenting on addressing the correct...
All I did was point it out to the door and put it on the next one, I forgot to change it. So Mark would like to have the door.
Okay.
We would create a concrete slatter so we can raise the door up so the top matches.
To the top of the garage door?
Right, yeah. So that the garage door will still be a steel pressed door that has the panels in it. And he wants to keep the adjacent 33-inch wide man door. And if it must be removed, then he'll start off and fill it in the wall. And it'll just be silent and that's the rest of the side. But it is nice to have that door.
Okay.
The new entrance door, I don't think there's any change to that, it's still the fiberglass stained door, painted door with a one single window in it. And it's not changing. The floor door proposed for it.
Yeah.
The new windows, we tried to make the, is it the...
A value, or value proposed?
Yeah, I had trouble getting anyone to come out of the three that were given.
Yeah.
One was out of town, one couldn't do it to the following week, following week, then he couldn't do it, the third one never got back to me. The first one got back to me, then he didn't come out, so I probably tried to contact all of them through the terms and couldn't get anyone to come out unfortunately.
So we're gonna assume that the bathroom window is not there, so that has to be replaced.
That has to be replaced.
The living room window that has the two cases, it's totally shot.
That'll be replaced.
And the rest will stay for now. If you like the window that we're putting in the bathroom, we'd like permission to replace all of them eventually. Be the same. So we want to use fiberglass windows. They're a wood and epoxy composite that Anderson makes. And they have the monouns fully divided ones, so it goes inside and outside, it's not applied to it. So I have some information in here about the windows. It's 40% wood fiber, 60% styroplastic polymer, that's on the 40% fiberglass interior section. So it's about as close to wood as you can get, but not to the wood, so that the bathroom will have that in there. So the kitchen or shower, but it is basically 40%.
Yeah, is that going to be the same material as the living room window?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. In last, in the meeting, didn't we talk about the living room window being a wood window? We were frustrated, we talked about what material that window was going to be, because we knew it was going to be needed to be replaced. We put it in the door.
We talked about epoxy things, but we'd like to discount all the materials that are there.
Okay.
The living room windows are going to be tipped, which would be the ones that double on.
Oh, okay. Which is accurate to the rest of the house?
Yeah. And a lot of the bathroom and the lower two, because they're stacked, they don't match.
I like that, I like that too.
Yeah, I know that Virginia thought about maybe taking all the grids out, but then the whole rest of the house would still have them, so.
Yeah.
The cost due, there's a detail for it, we're gonna go pressure treated wood. Four feet out by five feet wide, three steps coming down. We're gonna do a concrete slatter at the bottom, but there do have posts, footing posts for the actual structure ladder attached to the soapstone, so the ridges of the house. And wooden railings. I don't know if he's gonna do vertical metal or wood.
Metal or vertical?
Okay.
Both are acceptable.
I'm not sure I would like to see the spindles be metal and the rest of it be wood, is that what we're...
I mean, we voted in favor of that in the past.
You would or wouldn't?
I don't think, I would not prefer that, but I don't...
It would be preferred to be one of all.
I think it would all be.
Yeah, I was saying that both materials are acceptable.
Right.
My metal guy can pretty much make any of this.
Well, both materials are acceptable, but what I'm talking about is mixing the materials in the same building element.
We have approved it.
I mean, I thought it'd be more modern, if he did have metal spindles, but first vertical posts that are wood and hand rails that are wood. Also the lights, the black lights that we have, the black verticals, and those would look acceptable. I think, right?
I'm glad you brought that up, Brooke. I feel like those fixtures are a tad too modern for this house, at least on the exterior.
They are fairly modern, but I'm sorry, I just put away my blue sheets on this. Date of construction for this house, do you know?
1954.
Fifty-four.
It's a post-war.
Yeah, no, I know it's post-war, I just didn't know if it was 50s or 60s.
Yes, 52 in one place, just before I moved.
On the blue sheets.
I don't have a problem with the lights. They're unobtrusive.
Yeah, I figured we could get really cute scenes, so there's thousands of them.
This isn't a cutesy house.
New roofing, the new roof in Ridgehants has been done, but the sockets haven't been done yet. And the cabinet is replaced with CDX plywood, can either strip vent or cutting rounds, like three-inch round ones that who knows that story.
The continuous vents do a better job.
Yeah.
Have you done the calculation about net free air space on the eaves? Equal on the eaves, the two eaves, net free air should equal the free air on the ridge vent.
Yeah, and the strip vent we cut there.
Yeah, typically those little circular ones are not enough, and the goal is to, are you... We don't approve this, are you insulating the ceiling?
Yes, the flat ceiling in most of the houses will be insulated, there is a cathedral on the back that'll spray foam. There has been spray foam, so that cuts out the...
Well, the purpose of venting is to bring cool outside air into the attic space so that you don't get ice dams, or not as severe ice dams. So my recommendation is that you do full-length socket vents.
Yeah, and also if the sockets are a little over two feet, you can still cut the plywood and one foot lapid or something and still get the strip back in, so that is a good thing. Works.
Well, there, am I correct, Steve, is there still a required calculation for venting for attic space?
Yeah.
So you'll need to meet what of the code requirements?
Well, with the strip vents, when we double the ridge vent.
Yeah, so half on each side, front half, back half.
Yep. The siding, we would do hardy board, but the LP smart side is actually a better product as far as forkability, it's wood. We would do a six-inch or a five-inch reveal on it because it's so grainy versus smart, hardy smart board. Or hardy board is much smoother, it's good on pre-war houses with four-inch clapboard. But this one, I think, could be the five or six-inch reveal with this type of siding.
What's shown on the preferred elevation? Do you know if that's five or four inches?
Five inches, depending on which.
And you were thinking of going at what, at six inches?
Five or six.
Five or six, okay.
It's the smart side.
Yep.
This is the smart side?
Yeah.
Which design?
And is it...
Those ones aren't.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking about the design.
This.
Oh, okay, same design?
Well, the point, I have a question to ask, and then I'm gonna make a point. How is this installed? Are these, are these impressions going horizontally?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it's comprehensive, like seven or eight.
Sometimes the taller reveal in post-war houses has enough texture on the surface or if it's asbestos siding, if you're logging up, you have asbestos. It's grooved vertically. Wood, unless it's in really a distressed condition, does not have this kind of texture. It should be smooth.
Unless it's rough cuts or something.
Pardon me?
Unless it's rough cuts or something like that.
Yeah, but this is, this is not... Well, even so, I don't, this, that texture's pretty heavy for me. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to grab your stuff as well. I could go with a product if it was smooth, I would feel better about it if it was smooth, doesn't come smooth because it's a chipboard.
Yeah.
Are all three of these the same?
They're supposed to be.
And they're just different?
The gray one came out of this and the white ones came out of the rack, but they're supposed to be the same product.
Okay.
They're slightly different.
Yeah.
So I don't know which product.
What about on something like that, Virginia?
Well, it's, it's the same, it's the same texture.
Yeah, but you were wrong on the oldest one, that's what I was asking.
Well, because I didn't understand, I thought, when I asked the question, is this the material? I did not understand that these are, these are the same. This is the smart side and this is the...
That's smart side.
That's smart side also.
Yeah, how do you think we all pretty much know what it is?
Well, another, in my mind, negative about siding with this rough a texture is that it's gonna collect dirt, particularly on the street, where it's pretty heavily traveled. All those little roofs are gonna, are going to show even more.
Well, hardy pipe is about 25 cents per foot, per board, so if you multiply it times the whole house.
Cost is not, cost is not a factor in our deliberations. I have a question about the doors. Your drawing shows just a single pane, and all of the cut sheets that you have here show... I think, I can't, this one is not clear enough to know if this one is illustration of just a single pane.
Some embossed type of...
Yeah, okay, and what is, what is the intent? If this is what you want, I don't know why we give all these, that's why I'm asking.
Those were for the information purposes, so we can throw this out there. They were, they show the panels, but the single pane of glass is...
Yep.
So which door are we gonna approve?
One of them, that's on the draw.
Not any of these that are in here?
No, you said there, there's only, this was going to show the panels.
So I tried to make this point last time, and I don't know if it fell on deaf ears, but just like a... Okay. It's kind of an annoyance, it's not really like a big deal, but it's like, you know, if we're looking at fiberglass that's stamped like wood, I understand that we are trying to achieve a wood door, but a wood door at that time wouldn't look like a wood door, right? And so it's kind of like, you know, the opposite of what the achieved goal is, is a fiberglass door that looks like wood instead of a wood door that looks smooth and appropriate for the period.
It could be. The 33-inch wide is a little hard to find in fiberglass. It could be stainless metal in the same pattern, and it'll be smooth and look like the original doors. And it would be easier to find if they're just like...
You contradicting the argument about the siding.
Well, I mean, but, well, I mean, it's wood, I'm not necessarily in favor of that siding. My point is, is that it's like, you know, it's kind of silly that we're saying, okay, we want wood. And it's like, okay, well, it looks like wood, but it wouldn't have looked like wood, it would have been wood that looked smooth.
That's what wood...
Yeah, exactly.
...is painted looks like.
Exactly.
And the same, the same...
The same for the siding, yeah.
In this case, it did have cedar siding, which was ripped, and it had plywood siding, which was ripped on top of it. And it was painted cedar color, so it was meant to look more rustic when it was originally designed.
And my point about the door too, is if we did approve the garage door as well, I don't know if that same front door would mimic the garage door, because I don't think I could find the same door.
With the single.
With the single, I mean, we could, we could special or something, but I do know the doors with the grids in them are readily available, that you could get the same door for the garage and for the front door.
Are you, are you speaking about the man doors, the passage doors, or when, when you say that? Okay, you're not, you're not comparing it to the actual garage door?
No.
Okay, this is the garage door, the other is a man door in the garage. Just, I'm just trying to keep it...
So there would be a six light?
Yeah, that would be, yeah, if we were to approve, we'll have the six light.
Yep. It's, these are all six light.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we originally thought of, was metal, what metal's doing. Because either garage door will probably have a wood grain look to it, because that's what they're stamped to look like.
Well, the grids in the man doors, to me, conflicts with the more linear panes in the windows. And the size also of the panels in the garage door.
The door that enters from the garage, the man door that enters from the garage to the home, is a six light, six panel door.
I mean, both of them.
Now, the door that, obviously you can't see that, you know, can dictate what it's supposed to be, we're running it replaced with fire door, but it's got, it has six lights on it now.
Yes.
It was, and was originally a little filthy disgusting, I would sanitize our hands every time we touch it, but everything in the house was exactly like that, unfortunately.
Rubber gloves.
Yeah, big time.
I think, what is all the topics? Oh, the lighting cut sheets, so I don't know if you want to go through and tell us which of the things we will approve or adjust them to be approved package or something.
Right. I didn't have any issues with the lighting, I went through the September 1st document that you guys wrote, and my interest was mostly in the siding and the doors. I like for your proposed, if this is the preferred proposed, the two doors, that's fine. I know I was saying that we should probably just have one front door, but if this is what you want, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I believe that these two door, man doors, should be identical and different than the garage door in style and in color. So I think that we had spoken about having the garage man door match almost identical to the garage door itself. I don't think that would be a good look or historically accurate by any means. So having the two doors proposed with a six-light glass window on the top, fourth or quarter, whatever you want to call it, would be acceptable. I thought we were gonna choose one of these in here. But do we need to see, do you have a door in mind, or have you picked out a door?
There's not one in there that has this six light, it should be. Yeah, if you want to get me two, I can pick one up.
This one's prime steel.
Prime steel is, how many lights in there?
So the only original door is, is this one? The man door at the garage?
Yeah, so Virginia, that's what I was gonna go based off of what was historically there, replace in kind, but there is no front door, which makes our, which makes it a little tough saying it has to be in kind, but...
How did you determine that the garage, the man door in the garage was original to the house?
From the framing around it, and there's a little...
Framing, the framing could be original and the door, not necessarily.
It probably was not the original door of the house, because the garage wasn't with the original house.
That would be it. 33-inch wide, I don't know how to count.
Yes, you think the garage was an addition?
Yes, the garage was an addition, because the way that door is on the side of the garage there.
You think that was the original door inside of the garage?
The garage was added a year or two later, because the siding on the inside of the garage is just plywood and it's not finished.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't built originally with a house, but it was period, way back, you know, I mean, the 1950s.
Yeah, whoever, whichever of the queens wrote the blue form, it's pretty scanty.
Both man doors will be this, 33 inches wide, unfinished, smooth fiberglass.
And the main door is probably gonna be three, three oh.
Thirty-six and thirty-three.
See, this, the trim was original and it has this little piece over it because it was not six foot tall or seven foot tall.
Yeah, of course.
So that makes me think it was part of the addition.
Yeah, it was probably part of the addition. I didn't realize that that was a part of the addition, but it explains that goofy garage door entrance to the, to the house.
Yeah, there are two houses on the street that don't have a garage, and they still have the door.
On the side.
On the end of the house.
Yeah. All right, so that's the doors and the garage door. We discussed the windows and the window patterns. We do have to discuss the siding and the points that Virginia made. I'm in favor of the siding due to the fact that it's wood and it's, I've always been a pro wood on this board. The stamping, to me, looks a little bit too much in some cases. I mean, this one looks okay, I don't know if this is a different mold. They both say snow cap, white, smart side, so it's not if you're gonna get one or the other, it's just gonna be a mix of it throughout the entire. It could be something like this. To me, just especially with how this is cut right here, I feel like this is emulating a cedar shingle that would go this way and not a wood that goes this way on the house. So I think that these are two, actually, two different pieces of samples. And the back on this one doesn't have anything. Just based on where, my house is cedar shingle, so it looks like this, and it would be a wider shingle, especially with how this is grooved, it would feel like it would lay up and down like that.
My shingles on my house are just about that same width.
And the wet would actually be down over the previous.
Also be this way, yeah. So I don't think this is something that we would approve for this, because this, to me, looks like a cedar, faux cedar piece of wood. Which then brings us to these two. In my eyes, it's an improvement and it's wood, I don't really know much about that. But I think this is more of what it would look like.
This is wood as well.
Right, but that's simulating cedar, and we're not doing a cedar pattern on this, we're doing clavber pattern, so it should be, look more like wood.
I did a five-inch clapboard, I drove down to make sure it was holding up after 10 years, and it looks fine, when it's five or six inch, four inch would be too.
Too much, yeah.
So you and I don't agree on what we heard regarding this siding. So you and I don't agree on what we heard regarding this siding. I asked if the siding was going to be installed this way so that the grooves are horizontal on the siding.
That is true.
And that is true.
Mm-hmm. And I believe that's what they expect to do also. But with the samples, I believe that that's not actually a wood sample. I think that the cedar sample intended to go this way. So I just don't think they have the right samples. That's my opinion.
It came out of this package, so I don't really know. I mean, that's going horizontally. And it shows horizontally there.
The way that these newer sidings are installed is perhaps not the traditional method.
Okay.
That ordinary clavering or shingle siding would go. I don't know. I don't install this, nor do I install any other siding.
Yeah, you make a valid point that that could be for vertical orientation, but I don't know. Let's assume that the white ones are what?
Maybe. Let's see, I'll go do a little research.
About this piece?
This board as a general is not approved to that. Full grain stuff.
Right.
Just as a general.
We don't approve it. Other synthetic sidings. Just because this is pressed wood.
I mean, it would establish it as impressive. This board is ever established before.
Right.
Be thinking about that when we think about this approval.
And I would allow you to do it on post-war homes. I would never do it prior. Thank you. 18, whatever. I would never recommend.
Okay, here's a question while Steve is out doing research. For the, for the entry stoop, we're calling for skirting of owner's choice. Well, what's your choice? That's what's going to be visible on the outside. Because this is a section through the stairs. So you don't see what the exterior finish material is going to be on the stairs.
Right there, yep.
I'm sorry, well, I'm guessing you're not going to put it on the stairs. It's just on the platform portion, the two sides of the platform.
So where those five-inch more appropriate?
Yeah, we could do like, I've done like five-quarter boards on edge vertically. Looks pretty sure aesthetically.
Yeah, I don't think the lattice would be, the lattice you can buy is crappy and it's like two inch.
I agree that lattice, lattice I think is the most appropriate, but not what you can buy at Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever. Would need to be.
It's that way, okay.
I'm sorry, which way?
It was the way you lied about it.
Or horizontal.
So that the grooves are horizontal.
So.
So now, there are other, there's other type of screening that you can put on besides buying cheap lattice. You can do just vertical boards. That's a typical treatment. Lots of houses around Village have it. The house I lived in on Lincoln Avenue was always that way. It may not be that way now because I haven't lived there for over 20 years. So I don't know.
Do you want to have space to eat or toilet?
I need to anyway. I've done a fight together. It's nothing gets underneath there.
Well, again, the benefit of having the gaps between the pieces is airflow underneath there. I recognize you don't want critters under there. You can put some hardware cloth, take some hardware cloth on the backside. The inside face, if you don't want anything underneath there. And if you're not going to put a solid. But even, you know, even lattice, mice and chipmunks can get in there no problem. And any road who really wants to get in and just chew through the wood. So might as well make it a little easier for them so they're not quite as destructive. So what?
Whatever we just feel possible.
Well, we don't, we don't generally design, but to me, that's something that will be, will be visible as people drive by.
Yeah, so vertical, two-inch slats or one inch.
Yeah, something, something like that. I don't have the book here. And I'm not sure it would be a direct application, but Carl Schmidt has a great book on fences. And there are, do you know Carl Schmidt's books? The book has a variety of fencing styles. And for each, there's a size of the spindle or the vertical piece and then a size for the gap. So it really ranges all over the place. But two, two solid to one void is probably fine.
And then we have a board along the bottom.
Yep. Yeah, frame it out. Frame it out on four sides and build it, build it off of, off of the the platform structure and facing it. And that way you can put hardware cloth works, works well at my house.
It's not like they can be into the house. So it's.
Well, you still don't want somebody living underneath, yeah. The woodchuck couldn't get in, but chipmunks will.
All right, so I guess really it's a matter of whether we have two doors on the front or one. And what the siding would be in the windows. If the.
I'd like to circle back around the windows because honestly, I don't know if I'm comfortable with this material. I don't know enough about it, but the fact that it is predominantly a plastic is inherently against our design guidelines.
We had approved fiber recs windows in post-war homes.
According to.
The same material?
According to.
Yes, for post-war.
But is this the, the question is, is this the same material? Is this, what percentages is wood product? And what, what percentage is fiberglass? Compared to other.
Plastic.
It's a brand name, isn't it?
Yeah, fiber recs is a brand name which was approved by the board. It's Anderson makes it. I mean.
It's a bathroom window too. But isn't that the same material using the non-bathroom? On that one, yes. And on this, it will be the same material on that one. What about the other proposed? The other windows that are on the side? They're not in place.
They're not, they're, they're not before us for this review, correct? We don't have any side elevations for this.
So just be.
In the final packet. Is there a reason why we're not concerned about the side elevations?
Well, the windows aren't changing the siding.
The siding would change, but the windows aren't.
The existing windows are going to remain in place? Okay.
Yeah.
And there is one on the garage.
The rest of the windows in the house are usable and remain in place. The owner plans to install 3D Anderson fiber recs, single hung windows with full divided lights as shown on 2A, excuse me, A-2A.
Well, they're not full divided lights. They're simulated full divided lights.
Well, they're full divided. They go through one side of the door.
I, I get it. And I've seen the, I've seen the cut sheet. But they're still being applied to some paint glass.
Okay, I was just reading out what it says here.
Okay, I'm just saying what, I'm giving you a definition of a full divided light.
Oh, okay.
A full, well, aren't invisible in this room. Full divided light is where there's the wood muntin, not a moly. The moly is the big piece that separates windows when they're ganked. The muntins in a true divided light. Okay, he's saying full divided light. I'm saying true divided light.
Well, there's.
Yes, it's a, sorry. It's a technical difference. You can say full divided light. They're just not true divided light.
They don't have separate pieces of glass, but they have a back, they have the middle and the both sides. So it really looks like.
And the glass doesn't move through? Can I? Do you have a cut sheet handy? I've been sorting through too many sheets of paper. Oh, no, no. If you have to look, I can look.
Virginia's right here. So is the entirety of the frame, this composite? Is there like a clad to it or, you know, can you tell me more about the actual composition of it?
It's finished, prime finished or whatever you want. But it's the same material throughout as far as I know.
Well, this isn't, this is not a very good illustration, but it looks to me as though, it looks to me as though the glass is continuing all the way over here. And this is just a piece that sits between the two panes of glass. It gives the, it gives the illusion of a true divided light. And it's for a simulated divided light, this is, in my opinion, preferred because there is material behind here.
Correct.
There's their dividers, their muntins, faux muntins on the inside and the outside. And there's a piece in the middle so that you can't see.
Correct, no, I understand that.
They're not like the mold plywood you can stick on.
It's also one pane of glass. It's just like something sitting inside of it.
Yeah. And that's, that's a configuration that is discussed in part of our guidelines. If we're replacing true divided lights and we're allowing simulated divided light, this is the preferred configuration.
Anything else on the windows? I shouldn't wish any more about it.
Are you uncomfortable with?
I appreciate this board has voted in the past. I just don't remember it coming up, so it's just hard for me. It's probably the reverse point.
I don't, I don't have, if, if it's a sticking point and you need more time, I'm going to suggest that maybe we're not ready to make a decision. Plus, there's only three of us.
Well, there's also an, we, we tell the house is almost complete on the inside. So I'd really appreciate if you could come up with a decision, right?
Yep. Well, let's go back to siding. Well, Chris, do you have information on what was approved one? You guys are with Hardyboard? Are you guys okay with Hardyboard on siding and not using this?
I don't. Within the last year.
We approved Hardyboard. The other option would be go back and replace in kind with exactly what you have on there, which no one wants because it's plywood and it's cedar siding. So either all cedar or Hardy.
Actually, cost was concerned, but one of the reasons I'm more afraid from the Hardee is because Virginia had stated back, so what you thought Hardee was comprised of what you said a potential long-term impact could be. So we thought if we brought something in that was somewhat friendly, it would be more appropriate for what we want to approve. But do you want us to do any of that?
Well, I suspect that these materials are, will have the same sorts of problems that the Hardyboard does. So while I voiced concerns about Hardyboard, I'm, I don't think my concerns are very much different from Hardyboard to this.
And mine is more on the stamp or pressed style or pattern. If it was much smoother and less visible, I would be very happy with that since it is a wood-based material, but.
I agree.
I'm not sure if they have less or different patterns, if this is the only one you found.
I don't know. I think that's a variation. By the way, typically in your approval, given the Hardyboard, the board had approved smooth, but has not approved wood.
Right, yeah.
Full grain, full grain, correct.
Full wood grain.
I'm trying to trick the eye.
True divided.
Yeah. Full divided. With the accent.
Listen, this, this is a promotional technicality here. Just pointing that out.
When Hardy thinks a trim around windows and everything too. So that would be fine.
Yeah, that's what she wants to suggest.
So smooth Hardyboard.
Correct.
Four inch.
Four to five inch?
Yeah, you've got four, four or five inch.
Yeah.
What's your preference? Four or five, or does Hardyboard only come in the four?
It can be spread out to four or five with the same horns. So it'd be a matter of what's measured up and equal and balance and stuff. Maybe four and a half or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Module.
All right, you're calling for composite trim around the existing, remaining existing window. Will all, will all the casings be that same material?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the corner boards and everything? Corner boards as well?
Yes. The corner boards are marked there. We're also, we found there is actually windows in the basement that are there. They were boarded up, but they're on the walls. So we're reevalizing.
Again, the scope for ventilation.
Yeah, you want to go through it? I mean, we have the overhead garage door and the two man doors. Do we have any questions on that? And I have a question for Jeff. Are we approving this as one complete? Or is it seven different? Because they have different.
Application.
One application, that's it.
However you want to do it, but I would think one application.
Okay. I don't think we've addressed the shingles. I don't see anything in the packet specifically pertaining to the style.
The roof shingles?
Yeah, it just mentions that they're going to be replaced with architectural, but.
Not approved.
No? Okay, just on that list.
No, it's asphalt, asphalt. There is no.
Why's John Kelly coming in here then?
Why did I come in here with St. Louis church then?
All right, so new entry store, new windows, new front stoop, new roofing. The siding, we discussed that. And the number seven is the lighting. Do you guys have anything else we want to look at?
I may be able to tell here. Do you want to, if we can, tell the drawings and set them to provide a study?
I think we need to update the drawing for the packet officially for the door. The man doors, excuse me, the 36-inch and the 33-inch wide man doors. That would be good.
However, when you move, if you move to approve this, then I thought that should be.
We will mention that, yeah, absolutely. Because the drawings don't show the six, the six lights.
No, but I'm. You know, I was trying to scan and send it to you.
Perfect.
Well, our, whatever we approve will be in the, will be documented in the minutes in any of your approval letters. So I would say maybe we don't need to see, somebody needs to present revised drawings to Steve, to the building inspector. Code enforcement official, sorry.
I'm going to leave it there.
It's a new term relatively speaking.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second motion.
Excuse me.
And should we need to make, yeah, before we do that?
Yeah, I think you need to list the.
I just wanted to make sure as subchairs, making sure. I'll make a motion to approve this application based on the following criteria. The new garage door overhead is accepted as proposed. The two man doors, one at 33 inches wide and the other 36 inches wide are unfinished, smooth in texture fiberglass doors. I believe that is proposed leather river door.
Metal doors?
Oh, it's going to be metal, this says, the one you have here says fiberglass.
How do you get this fiberglass? Oh.
The man door into the garage is, is called out as fiberglass. The primary door to the house does not.
They do sell those both as fiberglass.
Is called out to be fiberglass.
They're bonded with fiberglass as smooth as well.
Get the smooth fiberglass in there?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, smooth fiberglass unfinished, 33 inches wide, 36 inches wide with six light clear craftsman unfinished.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, clear craftsman unfinished. There was, oh, this may not. Who's that, who's this, mine?
Uh, no, actually those are mine, I gave those.
Too, too many pieces of paper.
No, these are yours, this is mine.
Just for future reference. Well, I can't find it, go on.
As per the two windows being replaced, they will be replaced, one in the bathroom and one in the front. The owner plans to install the new Anderson Fibrex single hung windows with full divided lights as shown in A-2A. And the existing basement windows will be reused. New front stoop, what was your provision on the front stoop is accepted.
There needs to be a screening panel on the, on the visible, visible area beneath the floor of the platform. On the sides.
Okay. And did you define which material you prefer to use for the railings?
Railings, metal will be fine. Be used on metal, I forget your opinion on that.
Okay.
Well, I thought they would be appropriate for that age.
Right, yeah, not aluminum. It would match the lighting as well.
Railings, railings and posts?
I can do that, yeah. I've got a metal case.
I'm not saying that's what I want you to do, I'm asking the question.
I just wanted to let you know. I'll do, yes.
Our job is not to design it for you, and if we dictate to you, then we're designing for you. So all elements of the handrails will be metal. As stated by the applicant.
Siding, the owner will install a new Hardyboard with smooth texture and four to five inch clavbered planks.
All the window casing and, and corner boards will be the same one by three composite trim.
All right, second. We're taking them out, have anything to that?
Little bit there?
Yes.
In the whole room?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Keep what David wants, but I'll work to get more.
Though I do need stipulation, elevation goes, because these do not, you don't have, right?
You can't rely on that.
I mean, it's good for 90% of the packet, but it gets cut off and it doesn't supplement it. 25 South Main Street signage. Makes your face. Hasn't State Street yet? Isn't it open?
Yeah. Yeah.
Steve, will you give these to them? Sorry, one second.
Also, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to speak a little louder, you know, all the quotes, so you're all that well.
So my name is Karen, my fiancé died, but I'm here for the meeting. But Karen and I recently just started out on the street. And we weren't really sure what we were going to do with the rest. And then I met Steph over at Chicky's. And so we just opened our first boutique for our first new location.
Where's that?
Center, that's helping. So I moved from Children Place, my store was in Children Place.
Okay.
Almost three years coming up, under years, and just expanded and moved out of Children Place and into Chicky's here.
Nice.
So we are interested in putting some signs on the building to represent both businesses. My shop is called The Collected Home Company. And this is my second location, my first location is in the middle of Chicky's. And our owner, Marjorie, is our again. And so my shop is in the front portion of 25 South Main, so that 400 square feet. And then Stephanie takes the rest for Chicky's. And so because we are one building, but two businesses in one space, we're interested in two signs, but joined together so that they, you know, still represented their two businesses, but with, with the same space.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think the design and scale is appropriate. My only thing is I would love them centered over the windows, if possible.
It looks, it looks as though there may not be enough.
Right, I mean, it may be scaled down a little bit to, to accomplish that, but the. We love Virginia finish, we'll reset Virginia.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out, if you want them to be centered over the windows, as you said, the size of the sign may need to be scaled. So I recognize that there are numbers on here, arrows and numbers, but this is perhaps not an accurate representation of dimension.
Updated on rendering that was sent today, correct?
Well, no, we have a question on this one.
Oh, yes, so that is the old one with, which was previously two separate, like, signs. And then we, it was come to our attention that we needed to have them together. So the scale of the building obviously hasn't changed. So the new drawing in the rendering that was sent today.
That's not my point. No, no, I don't want anything. I want, I want an accurate depiction of what's here.
Of this measurement.
I will, I, of the whole elevation. If we, if we looked at. The requirements is stated on the application, what is required for signs is a drawing to scale of affected elevation, including sign and proposed location, including linear measurements of affected elevation. Separate scale drawing of the sign itself, including dimensions, material color, yah, 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 yah. This is just a photograph that has no scale on it.
The other picture, the larger picture is scaled.
This one?
Right there.
How do you know that's scaled?
Because I scaled it myself, by measuring it.
You made that drawing and scaled it?
I scaled the drawing, they made the drawing, but then I actually scaled it to a dimension. And then the sign is accurate based on the, you know, I mean, if you were to scale that drawing, that sign is accurate to the scale of the ton of building.
Well, it's, it still is my opinion that the application does not meet the, the applicant has not provided all the information required on our application form, which is an elevation drawing, which is an unobstructed view to scale.
They did an, they do a tree in the front there too.
If you, she's saying those are drawing.
A drawing, yes, you don't draw the tree in, you draw the elevation of the building. Even if it is just a relatively simple block drawing, you don't have to draw every single brick. You don't have to draw every single slat, you don't have to, of the shutters. You, you should, one should, show the size of the lintel above the windows because those are important character-defining features of stone. All I'm saying is, this application, in my opinion, is not complete because required information is stated on our application form has not been provided. And in my opinion, this is not an adequate representation of what it's going to look like. It's, the photographs are canted and there's a tree in the way.
The picture here is a secondary thing she brought today, just to show the joint, the side joint. The other picture is a scale drawing with dimensions on it.
I understand that, but it's not, we do not see the full elevation of the building with all the windows and shutters and all the character-defining features of the elevation shown in place. And I will refer back again to the required information on the application form, which has not been presented.
We have also agreed though in the past that, you know, to mitigate these issues, that ideally those would be raised prior to the meeting through reviewing the packet.
I did not receive the packet.
And I'm going, I'm going to disagree and say that what is required on this sheet, right there on this sheet, has been provided.
The words on the application form are drawing to scale.
Correct, and there is a drawing to scale, and there is a scale.
This is a photograph that's obstructed. Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with Steve about this, I'm not going to argue with Steve about this. This is an ongoing, continuous.
Yeah, we've had this issue before at the Pittsburgh gallery upstairs. That was another issue.
We did this for my store previously, to get my marble sign approved. And we just had, we did the same thing, the sign company, we essentially gained some of the oil, so I can pay for that. Do you, so that's the same way we guys approved for, there just was no tree in our building. Do you prefer that I hand draw it? Like, I didn't think that that would be acceptable way, that would be like, I have those skills. Yeah, like we use software and put these numbers.
If your sign manufacturer can generate an elevation to scale, that's okay.
So. I, I, yes, it works for a civil construction company and he ran his numbers and put these together. And with, like, legitimately drawn to scale, because this is what he does for everything.
I, I have drawn, I'm an architect, I'm a preservation architect. I know how to take a photograph of, of a building and, and render it as a line drawing to scale. I'm not saying, I'm not saying your husband did a crummy job. I'm saying this is, this is not enough information for me to feel comfortable making a decision because I do not, there are windows up here, there's stuff that goes on in the peak. There's a lot of other stuff that goes on, on the elevation of this building, which is not seen on this image.
Do you want us to hire architects to draw them? Because I don't think I have that skill, and I'm not sure that you have that skill.
I thought you said your sign, the person who made your sign previously did.
No, they just did the photo of the building and put the photo on the photo, the same way that we did the house. Yeah, for, so I physically went out and I measured each brick and they were.
And then they counted the bricks.
And we counted the bricks.
Yeah, I've done them too.
And then I went through and I literally with the measuring tape, I got on a ladder and I stretched the measuring tape to the windows, to the other windows, and then counted the bricks in between, you know, the purpleish blue, you know, paint above the window and then to the next, and then it's, so I guess with that all being said, what would be the best way to move forward? So do I go and take a photo up across the street?
You need, you need to have responses from the other two members of the board because they may be fine with it, and I may not be fine with it. In which case, if it were to go to a vote tonight and they agreed and I disagreed, you'd be turned down. If you come on tonight when the full board is here, I might be one out of four who disagrees. So I would say if you want.
So what she's saying is you're at an unfortunate disadvantage at this meeting, based on the amount of people that are here. We do have a quorum, but like Chris said at the beginning of the meeting, you do have your right to a full board of five individuals. We've had issues on these scaled drawings before. We've turned down and asked to come back multiple times, just in the last year and a half. I did personally have questions on the measurements of where we were drawing to. Virginia does make a point, the, it doesn't have to be a drawing, it is preferred to be a drawing, but we can't see the entire building, we can't see the top and the bottom, there is, the tree covers half of it. This, this, this is a better picture of it, of it removed away, but we still can't even see the full scale of this building. I ran all the numbers and luckily you guys have the conjoined sign because that is, you can't have that in, that, thank you for this drawing, this is nice. And your numbers are, are very close to being almost too big. Did you say your husband or fiancee? He, he did a very good job of getting these, very close to the sign's size that we would approve. So if it was a really small sign, I would say maybe there's an exception, but I'm, unfortunately, I would like to see a little bit more information on a drawing of the entire front of the building with the new sign. Especially with how large the sign is.
And just some numbers that would help, or like, you know, distance from the edge to the, to the shutter. Gap between the shutters, from the shutter to the door.
And we've asked that from other people.
I'm sure easy to get, but as I would reiterate, in front of a full board would be a different conversation.
Chris, are you asking about the distance from the bottom of the sign to the top?
If I was to ask them to have it more centered, to adequately vote on that, we would need to know what center is. And the distance that we have is incomplete to make that determination.
Right.
Well, also, there's, there, there are stone, I, I think they're stone, they could be wood. The window sills and there are lovely large stone lintels over the windows.
Yeah, they're probably pretty plentiful.
Are they new concrete? Because when this was built, they wouldn't have put a concrete lintel in there.
This building has transformed significantly since it was built.
So.
Oh, sorry, I'm not going to interrupt, sorry.
I just remember when it came up for the, the little back lot thing that you had, that I did a deep dive into this building and I was just like, whoa. It's been a lot of things. But I think to the board's point, you know, if, if it is too large of a scale, to have that centered would require it to be scaled down incrementally to a point that would probably be more aesthetically pleasing in between those windows.
Okay.
So we, you're more to prefer saying it went shutter to shutter? Because right now it hangs over the left side of the, the left window and it's just short of the right window, so.
I don't need it to go shutter to shutter, but if it was centered in a way that is aesthetically acceptable in the sign design, if it was longer, shorter, as long as it's centered over them, that's, I think, what I would prefer to say.
Can I clarify, are you centered over the windows or centered over the thing?
Well, the four of them, they're.
No, what Chris is saying is centered over the shutter to shutter, outside shutters of the two windows.
At the two door.
Is that, is that what you were saying, Chris?
Well, kind of, I mean, it, it doesn't look like there's a tremendous amount of space between the door and the shutter. So it to go longer, it would be fine, but I, you know, you're still working with a very limited amount of space to go over.
Then I apologize, Chris, what you're saying is you want it centered off of, between these two shutters.
The door is a different height too, the door levels are different. So it would be odd if you carried it beyond.
Oh, completely agree, but I'm not going to close that door, I mean, it's.
So I have one thing, I live on Church Street, which is the street that deads into Main Street here. So welcome to the neighborhood, I'm excited to see your guys' stores. But I went out and took a couple pictures and that tree is rather large in front of the entire building.
Yeah.
Okay, so just as. Have you guys thought about putting the sign in a different spot that would be maybe a little bit more visible to the pedestrians?
So.
Like where they used to be?
The other factors that breathe at home, next door sits out farther than our building. When we're walking down the street, our building is like several feet tucked back. And so we talked a lot at first about where the signs could be. And I think size is in our favor. And then the white background is why we chose the white, because we were thinking of black letters on the building and that was just going to get lost.
No, yeah, your building's too dark with the tree.
I didn't, you know, our, both of our bedrooms are long. And so we don't have an option, the previous sign was this way. I, do you have suggestions of where else a sign would be?
What were they?
Because we didn't think that there would be anywhere else.
They used to be on the sides of the windows right here. There used to be a sign right here.
But that.
On the left edge.
Ours have to go this way.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't have a.
Their sign to sign does not accommodate the location.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, I was just thinking outside the box, because I mean, when the leaves are gone, you'll be able to see it very well and as it blooms, maybe a little less, people know you are, but.
Literally right in front of the bench, below those two little windows.
Yeah, that one, okay.
And then, you know, if you're driving, you're going to be, you are kind of eye level, but.
but, you know, you're not really looking down, you're more so just kind of grazing in your exterior, you know, driving by.
Yeah, it's a tough building for signage.
Mm-hmm.
But I thought like that was the best.
Yeah.
With a white background, maybe it gives visibility to that tree.
Yeah. The only thing I disagree with that statement is, and only this is from the board, and what the Village of Pittsburgh says is, we do our signs to the pedestrians, so we don't care what it looks like from driving.
Okay.
So, just as clarification. But as you're walking by, yeah, of course, you still wanna be able to see it, but it is mostly what the pedestrians see on, on either side of the sidewalk too, so just not to use the driving word.
I think the white is, is pretty stark also, I, I would like to see some options for.
I don't know if that's within our purview though, of color.
Color of signs?
Of, of, of their brand.
Yeah, like that, for me personally, like I have a full branding and spec that I paid a lot of money for that, I can bring it to show like how my brand is allowed to be used by the person that created the sign.
I mean, I would have brought that up with like, maybe even say Fattush, that big black sign, I would have brought that up, but that's their brand, that's their brand.
Because the building, the body of the building is so dark.
Yeah.
And I'm not talking about a big change, I'm just talking about a little softer, just a little bit softer on the white, not.
White is personally, like white is my brand color, like an off-white just is not, so I, I do hear you saying it, just, I think my first instinct is that's not my brand, that's not how people recognize my store. That was my first thought on that.
I mean, our, our option before was literally taking the three dimensional lettering and putting them, like placing them actually onto the building.
Placing it in the building, yeah.
And then, you know, the scariness of that was now we have a whole bunch of holes drilled into this whole.
Yes, I would, I would absolutely not be in favor of applying individual letters to that building.
Yes.
It's old brick, it's soft brick, you can tell contractors all day long to only put the fasteners in, in mortar joints, and it's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
And it's devastating to old brick.
What about material? I may have missed that, I was reviewing a lot of the measurements and the, but where is it?
Uh, yes, it's solid core, four inch, five or four.
Where is it?
Half dimensional lettering.
Okay, solid core.
And it's six and, probably six, six packs, four corners, and then directly to the middle.
That'll look nice. So, we can do a few things, we can, we can put this to a vote if that's where you guys wanna go, or we can request that we have better drawings, table it for next month's meeting, if you guys are in a time crunch, we can table it for a special meeting, and we'll probably have Brooklyn send out a, or Alexandria when she's back, when she's back, on availability of the board, we've been pretty flexible in the past, within a week, any, any night really, we've, so, we'll kind of leave it up to you guys.
Can I ask a question? If you vote and answer, so you'll just come back for another meeting.
Application. Yeah, it's a whole new application, another fifty dollars, it's a whole.
Not worth it.
Okay, I just, I didn't know that that.
I would reiterate that you have the right for the entire board to be here.
Yeah, that's, okay, and we'll spread this out, and we'll get it done, right?
So, we know, do you know what drawings they're looking for?
So, that's.
Yeah, I'll get it with Carol and I'll take her.
And are you guys under a specific time crunch?
Being that we're open, it's hard not to signage.
Yes.
But it's on us, because we think this is very quickly to make this move, but I guess as soon as we can.
All right, do we know when Carolina or Carolina and Jeff Pollak are back?
I don't know, I'll find out.
Okay, let's try and get an email out tomorrow, and see if we can do a special meeting after the drawing is updated, and then we'll make sure everybody can be, and have a, a good vote on this one.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, twenty-six, fountain chimney. Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Very good.
I'm Brianna O'Shea, I'm from Mississauga.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, what do you wanna do, you're just gonna remove it? The chimney?
Yeah, you're gonna remove that just to underneath the roof line, and then roof over it.
And then just roof over it?
It is a brand new roof, you put a roof on, and you're, it's going to do.
Is that when you kind of discovered the issue, or what? Was it raining in your basement?
It was raining in my house.
Oh my gosh.
And so, we had to.
I was amazed that it was just a wide open chimney.
Um, it was raining on my brand new staircase, so.
Oh my gosh.
It's been doing a renovation of this house for two and a half years.
Yeah.
But I've been in front of the board before, so.
What, huh, uh, what does the chimney service?
It doesn't service anything anymore.
So, whether it was a boiler or furnace that has now been replaced with a side, direct vent out to the exterior.
There are all the heat pumps now.
Yeah, so we came to the board, got the permission to do the heat pumps.
Yeah, okay.
No longer using the chimney, it's not serviced.
I have no problem with getting rid of this.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
This design feature of your home.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, it was a full application, and there was a letter with recommendations to remove it.
Yeah, and they're really good.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have no issues with this.
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
As presented.
I second, oh, I, sorry, sorry to bend the second.
Number seven.
Pardon me?
She's number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Number one.
Yes.
Number two.
Yes.
That's a thank you.
Yep. All right, then we have a thirty-five Rand Place Garage Demo.
Could I, could I beg the indulgence of the board?
Okay.
Um, I can't comment on this.
Okay.
I'm, I'm recused. Would the applicant be willing to allow us to review these two sets of minutes and address them so that I could lead?
I have one question at the beginning of the meeting, I thought you said you didn't have to recuse yourself.
I thought I did not, and Jeff reminded me that this is.
So, she does need to recuse herself?
This is, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's my judgment, she does, she's already, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I, I have no problem with it.
Then I just wanted to be clear, because I thought you were gonna stay in the case, or in this.
No, no, no.
But if you're gonna recuse yourself, then absolutely, let's approve these minutes, it'll take.
Well, as long as the applicant is willing to indulge me.
Okay.
This doesn't typically take very long.
No, all right, so let me get this out real quick. All right, so the first one is Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board Meeting, regular minutes, Monday, June 12th.
And I think those are the revised minutes from.
They are, the revision was upon my request, and, and Chris's request, and I did not have any questions with the revision, so I.
So, you were the only one that had a, that had a.
Chris and I both had questions.
And it's been addressed?
It's been addressed, yes. So, motion to accept the June 12th minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Yeah. All right, number seven?
Yes.
Number one.
Yes.
Number two.
Yes. Okay, then the next one is Monday, August 21st, Preservation Board Meeting. The three of us were there, so the three of us can vote on it.
I have nothing to over subtract.
Nor do I.
Nope, looks good.
And I'll make a motion to approve these meetings as presented for Monday, August 21st.
Second.
Number seven?
Yes.
Number one.
Yes.
Number two.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, Virginia.
Good evening, gentlemen, one and all.
You've got your application in front of us, why don't you tell us in your words a little bit what you're looking to accomplish.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't think we can have a meeting.
Now that we have two people.
If it's information.
Yeah, it's just information only.
Still can't have a meeting, and, and your recusal has nothing to do with it, because once you recuse, you're, you're, uh, you can't, you can't have a meeting.
Even if, what, can we, can we even close the meeting without her?
We're gonna have to.
Wait, Jenny.
Yeah?
Wait, but we have to at least discuss this, if, we've, she's sat here all night.
We may not even be able to close without you.
Jenny, can you sit for, just let him discuss a little bit, because I, I, we can't meet if we're three people.
Yeah, yeah, Virginia.
We don't have some.
Look, we, we don't have a three, it's a, yeah, he wanted a two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have to hear what you have to say, we're sitting here for an hour and a half.
I don't have any trouble with that.
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, just give us a.
Sure, I'm Trisha, I'm from thirty-five Rand, just thinking this, you want? So, we've been at the house since, ten years ago, next year, and the garage has always been a problem in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
So, we've been before the board a few times.
Yeah, I read all that.
So, I've been reading on the section three historic design principles, and really what I wanted to find out is what would we need to do to get it to work, to remove the garage and building them?
Demolish it?
Yes.
Or move it? Because that was what was recommended in the twenty nineteen.
It was recommended to move it, and it was previously determined that it is contributing.
Yes.
We've had some other professional assessment done that it's not contributing, so there's a conflict there, which we don't have a result today, but, you know, if it's not contributing, how do we show that, or how do we, you know, come to that agreement? And if it's not contributing, is, does that make it up to demolish?
Who, who said that it was non-contributing?
About me.
Okay.
May I add a point of fact, Jeff?
Yeah.
This property is part of the National Register District, and the updated nomination form should get information on it regarding whether or not the garage is contributing.
It is, it is, I would say showing that it's contributing factor.
Okay, and, and, yes.
Right.
Just, just as a point of contributing or not contributing, the National Register nomination, in my opinion, should take precedence above anything else, because it's been recreated by the State Historic Preservation of the United States, and approved, and the National Park Service also approved it, that's what is identified in the National Register District.
How do I get it happy with that?
How do you?
I think it's online.
It's online.
It's online. So, if you, if you go to the Village of Pittsburgh.
The little rip about the house, that says that the garage is not original to the house, and was found at some time.
No, it's the National Register District. You ever see, you know, character on it?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, I haven't seen that film before about it.
Oh, yeah.
But.
It's in the appendix, I think, references.
One right here?
No, this one right here.
Well, this is information from the National Register of Historic Places.
Steve, we have that, we have the.
November 6th, 2019.
We're gonna check from the first, we have a report, and then I gave you, should've had that on it.
Oh, you're saying it's in the meeting packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, then you are right, I thought you were asking me about the boundaries.
No, no, it's in the meeting packet, I included with the, from the original section of barrel.
Two contributing buildings, one and a half story bungalow, and then the, what does it specifically state, the.
Did you hear your last sentence?
Yeah.
Again, my copy. That's from the National Registry Expansion, that's the one.
Okay, so if it's contributing, which, I guess the National Register accepted it's contributing, that would be hard to argue.
Right.
It was many years ago, determined that it was in good condition, and then there was a note that said, unless the condition changes, it's had two huge tree branches fall on the roof, 2017 and 2019, from a neighbor's tree, and we asked them if they would take it down, because it didn't fall a second time after the first one, and refused, unless we wanted to pay for it, and looking to take their tree down, and it was.
Right.
So, we think it's been structurally damaged, it's not the most sound, and really the biggest thing is, you know, if I'm reading the historic design principles correctly, that's what I wanted to understand, is the hardship side of it, because where the garage is located is really making it difficult to resolve the drainage problems in the house. So, because of the driveway, and we've had driveway contractors who have tried to help us out with it, because of where the garage is located, the drainage is going to the basement, we have a mold problem, and that's really exacerbated, my daughter has not, and she's on some special medications for it, and the other just thinks it's all driven by the mold. So, we've tried to remove the mold several times, in different ways, we've put in different kinds of drainage, we've added a new kind of, and the knowledge is to try to solve the drainage issue, but the driveway contractor, the architect that came to the last meeting and review, said definitely the garage is contributing to those problems. So, I mean, that kind of goes back to relocating it.
Yeah, right.
But relocating it after the trees have fallen on it, and because it was so poorly constructed that it's, you know, kind of rotting from the ground up, makes it really challenging for us on top of the fact that it's pretty much useless, so to invest in moving and relocating a property, wanting to have it be useless, is frustrating.
It'd be two, two things, right?
What?
Potentially, it'd be two separate items.
The hardship, and this don't, this is still on, the hardship is, is directed to the hardship of the property, and not the hardship of the occupants of the property. So, and if you're saying that it's not structurally able to be moved, then we have to have somebody to look at that to be sure that's the case, or we need to have some expert, and, and really, if you're tying the whole thing to drainage, then, then the report would have to be from some engineer that had looked at the property, tied the drainage survey with, tied, you know, this is the problem, there's no way to fix it, and the garage can't be moved, I think it's probably the way it's being lost.
Okay, and the village would do that research?
No.
And we'd have to pay to have engineers determine if the drainage can be fixed without changing the garage.
And then the garage couldn't be moved.
Is there anything the zoning board would say about moving this, or having it be moved, or because of drainage, or access, or anything like that?
They wouldn't have, they don't, they don't have any purview of the existing site.
Okay.
They were coming in for a new site plan, or building something new that would approach in a way that was inappropriate, then you have, you have something to say about it, but not in existing condition.
It's okay that the garage needs it, so that you can't access the backyard because of the addition that was put on the house, but it's not.
I mean, that's, that, that is an existing condition. And we, the village did not create that, it may have permitted at some point, but the great condition, frankly, the house has existed that way. So, it's an existing condition.
So, does the house wall continue into the garage wall? Or did they just build it to the, where they actually just basically touch?
They, they enter two apart.
Oh wow, there, so there is like a gap? I couldn't, I couldn't even tell from the pictures, at one point I thought maybe it was a continuous wall that they, you know, made it look like this, yeah.
It's, it's just behind the back wall, but I, it just fit on that. It just fit another, that addition.
What they did shine, how they, they have one heck of a time.
Right.
Yeah, this is the picture, I even circled, like, I can't even tell if it's touching or what.
And, and it's your position, you'd still like to have a garage.
We'd like them to crack garage that's actually usable.
Is this a one and a half?
I mean, if.
No, it's barely a one, if you put one per, maybe.
Structural integrity of it is, as you say, I would imagine that that would be two things, no? Demolition, approval of the existing, and then.
Well, it was also going to get into whether or not it is immediate.
Right, but that would still be the similar assessment outside of a drainage issue.
Right.
Which could, depending on a conversation with an engineer, be cleaner.
Need some, I think, the structural.
Well, if, I mean, if, if this is, in fact, you know, you said there was rotting and, and it was in poor condition. And if that were things that could not be resolved, I mean, demolition could be appropriate under certain circumstances. And then a separate issue of a new structure. But again, that would still be a similar situation. You kind of have to feel out what would be more appropriate, uh, the viability of it being an issue because of the drainage or the viability of the demolition because of the structural integrity.
We think it should be demolished because of the structural integrity of the property. Because the drain, if you can't, we've tried everything and we can't, that's it. We'll just continue to pick up. If you watch when it rains, it goes right from the garage into the side of the house, which is underneath the basement stairs. And there's a suction that just, the mold just comes back. We put in drains. And the driveway contractor, there's a couple of different driveway contractors that they can't regrade it. It's written on the property, one can't regrade it, the other can't regrade it, the train to the neighbors.
Yeah.
Also, the driveway is also one of the great, like the basement, the driveway. But to replace the driveway and regrade it in the next phase.
I, I don't think I have enough information to say one way or the other, but just kind of big picture. I mean, it feels like those are two roads forward.
Structural engineer, if it, if it should be demolished because of the structure, if it, if it were to be moved.
Potentially, or.
Do we recommend that? Which engineers to use? It would have to be Barrow, it would have to be Historic Preservation?
Here, here was not an engineering firm, it was an architectural firm.
Right.
But whoever does the assessment should be, uh, someone who is experienced and around the way you saw this.
Correct. So that's why I was asking, do we recommend who is experienced in that field? Or we have to, do we have a recommendation for them to contact or?
I think the red name, so you can public, there are a lot of things for suggestions from Jennifer Erns.
A H R E N S?
A H R E N S, yeah. Jennifer, is that, would that be a conflict because the original, uh, original?
No, she's just giving her name to, uh, of people that she could contact that could do the engineering work on the garage and the drainage issue.
Well, there's, uh, those are two separate issues. The drainage issue would be actually addressed by an architect or a civil engineer. And structural issue should be addressed by structural.
Right.
So we have to pay for the engineer to determine this is, this is the issue.
Yeah, I mean, we, yes, well, you would have to establish, you're, you're making a claim that would take some expertise to establish.
What about the hardship of the property that the drainage is damaging a National Register historic?
We'd have to establish that.
It's really obvious that mold is.
Yeah, I mean, we need it for the documentation, just for the record, right?
Correct.
There's no hardship definition that it's causing health conditions to people in the house.
No, I'm sorry, I missed that.
There's, there's nothing related to this that is a factor because it's causing health conditions to people in the house. And my daughter's asthma is worse.
If it was a general, if it was a general health issue, maybe. But it, but hardship doesn't have a really relation to the occupant.
And to your point, there's been how many hardship applications in your time here?
Zero.
Yeah, there's not really much.
No, that's not true.
Well, now one.
Didn't come to bus, came, was a hardship application on appeal to the ZVA at 75 Monroe Ave. That's gone, there's no more appeals, the ZVA will be deciding, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting. Write it in your email, and then I'll contact Jennifer, we'll get some names, and I'll email your names of people who could go on the subject. This, what, what I would say is on the record before the board, the record currently before the board, there really is no way to justify demolition. So in order to change that record, you're going to have to add to it. And that's going to be an expert engineering type of stuff.
Okay.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Now, I'll give a rule of Jennifer and sort of, if you got names, you can email them.
Well, I can, I can tell you right now, I would suggest Johnson B R B.
And who?
Johnson slash B R B engineer, and the structural engineering firm that, so Barrow will school most of them.
Okay.
My problem, I think, I'm on my phone still, you can figure out everything.
If you don't have it, you can give it to us tomorrow. I, I'm calling this morning, I'm seeing that around the village, I'm going to try to find it. It gets to work for us, like I just paid.
Oh, okay, nice.
I just paid. We're exactly buying that.
4828130.
Yeah, well, if, uh, nothing else on that regard, uh, motion to close the meeting?
Second down motion.
Just, just before you, can I just, can I just one more time give the definition of what the hardship is? Not like I'm not replacing.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
I can give you a definition of what hardship is, I can point you to the definition of hardship. Hard with our HPV code. And if you go on a line.
Maybe we have Johnson sheets.
Right. And you look at 112 of our code, section, chapter 112 of our code. And if you go to, uh. Section 112 hyphen 8, it's going to look just like this, okay? Alteration, construction hardship, lead process and criteria. Some will be applicable, some will not be applicable, but, but that's what you're shooting at right there.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have the motion to second the close, will you roll call Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting is closed.
Thank you.